Good evening, Mr. Chairman, our Councilman. Rob Stevens, a designer here in the planning department, working on the projects for a number of years. The DIF package that all of you have received contains a spreadsheet, and I'm just going to run through those line items on this spreadsheet. I know the copy of the Council has been received, including a lot of the cost estimates that our engineering teams have pulled together, and a lot of the sort of details of where these numbers come from. There are members of the city, civil engineers, working on the downtown area currently here. There's also parking engineer investment associates here that can answer some questions. But Mr. Gary, in any case, there's going to be a garage specific meeting next week. And you guys have already introduced to Craig Seymour and Jeff Facher. So sticking with the garage theme, I will take those costs on board. It is item number six in that spreadsheet. There's a number of sub-items with that, but the basic structure of the garage has been estimated at $31,250,000. The next line item under that goes to some of the points Mr. Gary was making as it relates to the facade and the look of that. We budgeted $1 million. There are a number of facades that have been under review, all under that amount. But we felt that the $1 million is a good, strong number to have in there to make sure that this garage is fit with the neighborhood. Below that is engineering and architectural designs. That is a percentage of the overall garage cost. And then item sixty is site access, partsaping, landscaping. There's approach roadways that need to connect to this garage, connect tissue. There's estimates in the air for those numbers. The next line item is environmental. There is claimed to be a sub-level to this garage that will require the removal of an awful lot of urban fill, so that carries with it a very significant number. Another element of this garage is the stormwater drainage relocation. There's a trunk line, Phase Two. Phase One, if you all remember, is connected to the LBC land disposition agreement, where Phase One, that storm drain is directly under that private building. The city will be financing that Phase One under a different line item than I would get to. This is Phase Two, which will complete the replacement of the stormwater drain in the Hancock Lot. The next line item escalation is we're still in the preliminary design phase. Escalation is a common line item added to construction estimates to speculate what construction hard cost would be at the time a project goes out to bid. So that's a natural percentage escalator, and then there's a contingency in there. So the overall cost for the garage by this point is $31,250,000 for the superstructure. And then with all the add-ons that I just ran through, it comes to $46,597,000. So that is the garage estimate at this time that's being requested. To get back on track, item back to item number one, we have there $125,600 for essentially three line items. That is connected to the Hancock Adams Green Transportation Improvement Project. In order to tackle this project, we've always had to split it into two phases. One is we needed to close the road in order to build the park. So in order to do that, there was quite a bit of subsurface utility infrastructure that seems to be a theme for tonight. So there's some additional stormwater drainage fees in there, and the city has had to work and negotiate with our private utility companies, that would be National Grid Electric, as well as Verizon Telecommunications, on the relocation of significant portions of their infrastructure. This is trunk line infrastructure that follows Hancock Lot, so there are negotiations and fees related to those relocation of those. Item number two is connected to the MBTA station redevelopment. There is some engineering oversight because the city has, currently has two federal transportation guilds that are working to help redevelop that site. The first is a transportation community service planning grant, which is just under $1 million. We've had that for a couple of years, and that's funded Parsons Brinckerhoff's effort with the city to do some engineering and structural analysis. Parsons Brinckerhoff also updated the overall lien certificate for the redevelopment. And the city has recently received a $4.2 million bus waste grant, so that will be going into place. But in the meantime, there is a need to fund some local engineering oversight for that project. Both funds are, both funding amounts from the federal government have kept that as DOT. We oversee the contracts that submit reimbursements for both. We do expect the demolition of the Quincy Center T Garage to occur this year. And the city also expects the MBTA to issue a request for development proposals on that site this year as well. So the $75,000 in there will go to oversee both of those efforts, as well as the existing effort to Parsons Brinckerhoff. Item number three, urban renewal, 4373 Dennis Ryan Parkway. This is connected to the Chestnut Place LDA. In there is $50,000 for survey and land transfer documents. For that piece, the city had taken, 1950s, a number of housing lots to, for what would then become the Hancock Lot. There was the failure to file at the registry of deeds, some of those documents. So $50,000 is there to clean up some of the titles with the city's ownership of the Hancock Lot. The other main items connected to that redevelopment are being funded by the developer approved by this body through an LDA. Item number four is the LBC partners' LDA support. Here is where the Phase One of the stormwater drainage financing is coming in. We believe Phase Two will come in with garage development. The city is also publicly financing the A-Dream and pedestrian acts. And there is also some sidewalk and drainage improvements. Item number five is the Cottage Act and Hancock Street public improvements. This is internally, we refer to this as the Alvalvo. Through the Hancock Avenue Transportation Improvement Project, as well as the Western Chestnut Urban Renewal Project, the block with Chestnut Street, Cottage Act, and Hancock Street is above 75% completed. So the balance of that triangle of water would be completed with this line item. But a sneaky important aspect of this specific geography is there is water and drain lines coming from the Ross Garage area through that very, at that small alleyway in Hancock Street, across the street, and through Cottage Act. So there's fairly significant water and drain line improvement there, 2.5 million. That is going to receive all the future Ross Garage redevelopment, raise water and drain. So that's why that has a high number. At covered six, junction number seven, the property acquisition of 31 and 23, 31 Chestnut Street and 23 Cottage Act. As was stated in the urban renewal amendment four about a year ago, the roadway access and the relocation of city utilities that bisect the Hancock Lot have necessitated the need to take this property by eminent domain. The owners have been notified, they were actually notified last year, soon after the approval of urban renewal amendment four. And the city has hired attentive relocation specialists that has reached out to all the businesses in those buildings. These are pretty solid estimates for what it's going to take to acquire and relocate all those businesses at 31 Chestnut and 23 Cottage. Item number eight, this is the Hancock Lot Cottage Street sewer relocation. This is the sewer main sewer line that bisects the road that is in the middle, or standing in the way of the proposed parking ground. So that sewer will get relocated. And then Dennis Ryan Parkway between the courthouse and the Hancock Lot requires, actually, this very deep sewer utilities there, beyond 10 feet. So that does create a construction premium. And at that point, once this sewer is relocated, we would like to finish off Dennis Ryan Parkway because I think that area will be done as far as construction impacts. You know, that will occur starting with the first with the Concourse Roadway, and then second with the Western Chestnut Development. Item number nine, the city is continuing with the development of the Bergen Parkway Access Bridge. This would be a third bridge over the training tracks. We currently have, are working with our master DOT partners who have that project. The bridge scan under design, so the state is currently designing it. They're probably beyond 50%, probably close to 75% design at this point. They've instructed the city, they would like to advertise construction for that project the last quarter of this year. So what you see here is right-of-way. We do believe portions of some of the private property along the tracks are going to need to be secured for the right-of-way in order for the master DOT to approve what to issue the construction they own that project. And then, as was discussed back with urban renewal amendment four, the extension of that roadway, Clifton Street, across Hancock into the Hancock Lot, also is carrying right-of-way and a streetscape cost associated with the Clifton lane. Item number 10, as most of you know, a local company, Hawk Trucks, purchased the whole Quincy Hospital site to part that agreement. They were designated as the master redeveloper for the Ross Garage area. The city, the planning department, have begun meeting regularly with the Hawk Truck team to develop plans for that site. And here is funding for engineering analysis and urban design services related to that. Item number 11 is a list of all of the city's consultants, be it engineering, financial, on the urban design, appraisal, public relations, government outreach. For this figure, I looked at the run rates of consultants the city has used over the last several years and did a projection on the next two to three years of what those run rates would be, with what's the plan for both the Hancock Lot as arts destruction, and then what we hope will be planned in the Ross Garage area. Item number 12 is legal support services. And then item number 13 is continuing funding of two primary downtown positions, the downtown engineering manager, as well as the council.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Council. We're all available for any questions you may have. At this time, we'll call upon subject matter experts who are here, or those of us who are at the podium who do not have the information.
You guys available, 2:15, by the way?
I'm going to try to, I can't commit to that tonight.
We appreciate it, you're good. Council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, if Mr., was it Mr. Seymour, the first presentation?
Yes.
It's important for me because I'm leaving, so I'm trying to put this in some form of a narrative for myself. Because as long as I've been on the Council, I think, starting back in 2001, 2002, Mayor Failen at that particular point began to lay out essentially a vision or plan around the downtown redevelopment. And if I remember correctly, I think from the beginning that that was really one of the key priorities, I know, was finishing the Concourse and having that worked out. But I think from the beginning, the DIF component was the model that they were utilizing in order to continue this downtown development. Is that kind of an accurate historical statement?
I have my theories on the fact that Mayor Failen, of course, failed in generalizing.
Well, specifically, Dennis Harrenton was planning development at that time, before he forced the whole concept to begin. Perhaps, I don't know if it was in failings, but I think that's it. But if you walk through the renewal plan budget, we'll want to take a look at some of these various things. First off, the first 2007, does that reflect the $30 million DIF bond that was passed? Is that reflected in that, specifically the 47902630 number?
These, I believe, I'll have to defer to Mr. Stevens, but these are the actual costs, public improvements that were estimated.
Estimative, but I want to be sure there's, that when we get into URDP number one and URDP number two, that none of those were associated with the death. That we had a particular finance model that streetworks had put forward, which was, we authorize a bond, they spend the money, and then we pay back from that specific bond. So as we're looking at those numbers, those estimates, we never drew anything on any of those, correct? That's, that was just, those were just projections at that point. We never got around to.
These were cost projections, what the cost would be.
Right. But it's important, and perhaps I don't know, maybe Mr. Gary puts a better sense of these things from a historical perspective, but DIF was not the primary driving factor with those specific URDPs, was it? I mean, it was, it was a different vision, because we had this so-called master developer who was, you know, having a single project essentially, and they were allegedly going to privately improve these and from link that, we would simply pay back. Is that, that really didn't rely on the DIF model, right?
Right, yeah. You're generally correct, Councilman. The original 2007 budget listed on one of Mr. Seymour's slides was 47 million. The Concourse was actually underway prior to the approval of your.
Okay, but the $30 million bond, when was that passed?
So that was passed in conjunction with the original.
What year was that?
That was 2007, both were in 2007.
All right. And was this, was that, was that part of that, this, or was this something separate to 47?
The 47 was even beyond that fourth, you know, if we.
I got it, I got it.
That was projected cost.
But the bottom line is, is that when, when we started moving into this other model, there was good reason in some respects, because if I remember correctly, the market at that particular point in time, there weren't, there wasn't anybody jumping up necessarily to develop downtown, and streetworks had come forward with a, with a plan and was willing to try to raise the capital necessary to kind of do this. And again, obviously, that didn't happen. But what did happen, correct, was millions of dollars were leveraged in federal and state dollars that went into the, to the infrastructure improvements that took place. So accurate assessment.
That is, that is correct, yes. Streetworks was looking for, you know, over $300 million public financing by any means necessary. DIF alone would never get to that number.
Right.
So what happened was the development of the 121A concept, where streetworks had pledged to pay more. Typically, that program, that state program, was, would operate similar to DIF. A community could offer a 121A agreement for less than that, more taxes, but you'd get the security that the owner would pay, you know, 20 years or 30. Streetworks went, came in and said they'd go beyond.
But when we shifted back, these kind of concepts, the focusing solely on our public lots and developing those and creating a zonal structure where people outside those specific lots would come forth, and the DIF became very viable again as kind of a financing for it.
Absolutely, yes. And, you know, I was here back with the original urban renewal plan. Part of the backup to that plan was, you know, 1970 was the hill diverse, you know, downtown. In the 1990s, Sasaki was in here when they closed the plant. What separated the current urban renewal effort from the historical efforts was the DIF plan, that the ability to publicly fund it, the infrastructure.
So those plans just didn't get shelved like us, but rather we had to slowly, admittedly slowly, but continue to move forward with the whole concept of the downtown block. And I just wanted to make clear that, obviously, these are not monies that we have spent that are outlined here. They were simply projections. And so everything, and I think the point of the presentation is showing what's being proposed in this DIF is kind of consistent with the projections that we've had to date.
Correct.
All right. Which leads me though to a little bit of confusion that I just hope I can clear up. But I'm looking at the two development scenarios that we have here. You've laid out what's best case and a worst case in terms of that. In order to do that, have you already made some sort of estimates in terms of what's going to be required around the Ross parking lot development that's being proposed there?
Yes, we have.
Okay. So, so again, none of that is reflected in the budget that Mr., that Mr. Stevens presented. So the assumption must be that you're going to be coming back, the city will be coming back again to expand the DIF at some point, because I don't see anything other than planning being reflected specifically in this budget.
For the Ross Garage itself, for that site development, there most likely will be a lot of public infrastructure requirements. What's uncertain is where that, who's going to pay for those, and how it's going to be paid for.
But your numbers are based on certain estimates that we have obtained now in terms of what that's going to cost.
There are some very rough costs associated with that. The program for Ross Garage site under visiting developer is conceptual at best. We've taken the square footage and the types of uses that have been forecasted for that. We estimate the revenues, the costs have not been looked at yet, or the source of those costs. They could, many of them could be developed or driven, so it could be public infrastructure. The point of it is, though, is that there is significant with the Ross Garage site included in this, there is significant additional revenues, over and above what's necessary for a union.
Right, but the.
It was a decision as to whether to use those or.
The model that you put forward, though, is when you say worst case, no Ross, what you're meaning is we don't commence on Ross.
What I mean is no revenue comes from Ross.
Right, but, but the point is, this is one of the difficulties that could be in terms of a worst-case scenario, right? Is that we do proceed, and particularly my understanding is that's more of a specifically commercial project. And I'm assuming that it probably don't rely on some version of thing of IQ in relation to that, I think, correct? Seems to, Stevens nodding. But this doesn't, your worst-case scenario doesn't take in the fact if we do commence, and then our projections around commercial interest in that doesn't really manifest itself. There's not a clear, basically, we have MD unions that we built there. No, we build it and nobody comes. That's a different list that could dramatically change the picture, correct?
True.
I just think that, you know, we need to be clear on that. But as far as proceeding with this A, and with the Hancock Lot, you're fairly confident in those numbers that that's sustainable?
Yes, I think so.
But over time, I see, but this city, and I'm looking at Mr. Stevens again, I assume you're going to be back at some point with another DIF, I think.
Your surmise is correct.
Yeah.
Your analysis is on point. The worst-case scenario was predicated on virtually no additional development occurring. The only portion of the request for you that relates to the Ross Lot is the portion related to the DOT project for the construction.
And you have some planning.
Exactly, there's some planning, some environmental monitoring.
So the number that this is being based on, on the URDP four is still, that's the 128 number that would.
That is correct, Councilman. And as Mr. Stevens said, we have been proceeding on a weekly basis in meetings with designated developer to begin fashioning the plan for the Ross side. And so prior to their designation, anything that was projected for that side of the city downtown was speculative. Whereas now you have a qualified developer that has financial wheel involved to begin purchasing property. They have been purchasing property here. We are engaged in the planning process of them, and as that develops, then we will be in a position to determine what types of public improvements need to be made on that side of downtown to support the type of commercial development here.
And just finally, as a note, I do notice that talks about city personnel.
Yes.
And I know in the past, DIF, that that, I kind of raised the stench back in 2010 in discovering that because that was never really put forward at the time. I have some difficulties with bonding personnel, quite honestly. But what would be helpful for coming and getting would be, and I don't know if you can do it now, to lay out what this is essentially for the additional $700,000. That might be helpful.
Sure.
And part of my concern, Bill, is I, you know, we went to creating these kind of structural death rates. We bring these people in, and they don't, they never really necessarily leave, you know what I'm saying? And I just, I would love to know exactly what it is we're talking about in this position.
Well, I can tell you where it's, it's myself and Mr. Frank Conventosa.
That's it?
That's it.
I'm okay with that.
And I can assure you, in time, I will leave.
Well, I won't be here to remind you of that, so.
Then I'll join you.
All right. That's, that's really helpful, Bill. And again, I think the important point is that, and I know I was unfair to put it back earlier for sender, but it is my right of election that I think that originally, prior to us getting into this other specific streetworks component, DIF was the way we were going to achieve it, really.
And I allowed Mr. Stevens and Seymour to field those, because I was not present for that department, so I.
Well, Steve, Mr. Stevens is not in the background, so I trust that's accurate. But thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Just to kind of reiterate, that's why I was more interested in seeing, you know, the. Today, provided that this move forward in total, which obviously will have deliberation, you know, $120 million looks like on top of this data. Just kind of sidebar question I have to Mr. Gary, because I heard some conversation around, you know, the Bergen connector that was sold up. Is there a way to auto-lot? We could at some point provide on a commercial tax basis in a good spot. We qualify for IQ, do we not?
We believe that the reverse development that is envisioned for that area does qualify for IQ. Mr. Stevens actually submitted, just recently, a letter asking the Commonwealth to extend our application.
Which we've done in the past.
As we've done in the past, correct? And we actually will be meeting with state officials concerning that and all of the related development issues that are occurring in downtown, actually in the next few weeks.
So the question, this is more of a refresh from the end, almost down the road. IQ draw, you just nod your head. That's not a, it's basically not free money. Is that a low, low-interest loan from the state where you can basically essentially stimulate growth, is my opinion.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I know you pointed to me to answer that question, but Craig Seymour is actually on the.
The Sees are all there, so we're all.
He's here, he's here. So Craig is actually on the state's list to review IQ applications. We also have him under contract to.
We also have him under contract to dash an auto application, which I'm assuming he won't review. So he's one of the experts on IQ. Craig, I'm sure you can spend a few moments to give a refresher on it.
I was looking, Craig.
I think it's, I think it's looking pretty good. We need to have a specific project for, Bill. Just a real refresher on IQ. It is taxing from the financing. What it does is captures sales tax and income taxes from net new jobs, net new sales. And that means sales that otherwise aren't in one part of the Commonwealth, to this part of the Commonwealth, coming either from outside or they're net new to the state's economy. Retail sales, for example, have a very low contribution because that's just moving things around on the state lot. Office work, particularly medical office work, biofuels who go high tech, has a very, very high contribution. Essentially, anywhere from fifty percent or a hundred percent of this income taxes on those jobs can contribute toward. What happens is it's a state grant. The state issues a bond and then earmarks those revenues, Department of Revenue earmarks those revenues from those tax sources and pays the bond on it.
So it's actually debt service by the state? So it doesn't come back, the obligation coming from the city of handling this account to.
The point is, the city is on the line for should those revenues, should those income go away or don't add up to it when they should, they don't need to, Craig, you know.
So in a perfect world, this, you know, this model at this point, when would be the commercial base picks up and moves forward? Rough timeline, definitely not going to hold you to it, just more interested in understanding. When would be the timeframe where we could move forward as proposed or is soon to be proposed, when would we qualify?
Means when IQ program is focused on a specific, one or more specific projects, it can't issue, they can't issue a bond until those jobs are known to exist or the sales are about to occur. So in this case, we've been looking at the Fox Rock proposal for all these bases. Many of those jobs might qualify, and as soon as that becomes a real deal, then the applicant, the final allocation can go in and when those jobs and construction starts, state can have one and reimburse the cost that you gave our.
So you have the IQ, that's what we just found out. Appreciate it very much. Further questions, Counselor?
Thank you. I saw you, Craig, very young. So we do this every time. I just, we don't have to debate it, but I have a bit of a disagreement about the DIF growth being related to development. You know, we've gone through this, I think that there's some natural appreciation growth that isn't really accounted for, we showed it this new growth, but through the natural appreciation of a real loss of real estate market, that new growth would otherwise go into the general fund to support the entire city, not just downtown. So when we use the DIF money, we're essentially tying up money that's generated from the downtown and we're tying it up for use only downtown, which isn't something we do anywhere else in the city. Representing West Quincy, Ward Four, Crown Colony is one of the biggest tax generating areas in the city, there's a couple others, but that's one of the bigger ones. I would love it if we said any money generated by West Quincy is going to stay in West Quincy. I think Ward One would be very different, but in Ward Four, we generate a significant amount of revenue, I think, folks, its quantum would be appreciated on such a plan too. So when we, when you do that with the downtown, you're essentially taking monies that would otherwise be used for the benefit of our neighborhoods, the infrastructure in our neighborhoods, paving streets, you're earmarking it for downtown and you're requiring it to be spent downtown. So I just, I think we don't acknowledge that as much, that when we're spending money downtown, it's exclusive for downtown. When everyone else is paying taxes, it gets spread across the city. So when we're using DIF bonds that, and then we're also expending other monies for the downtown with infrastructure, because not everything, not everything is DIF, I mean, we put other money into it. I think we're limiting our resources for use in our neighborhoods and making our neighborhoods better. What's the, the DIF growth projection from the URDP developed on the Hancock? Is there a page in your presentation?
DIF growth?
Yeah, DIF revenue, estimated DIF revenue at the Hancock lot.
I'd have to go back to model and make that up separately. I mean, I didn't report that out specifically.
Okay.
If someone likes to do it.
Okay.
But if I may.
Because in the past, yeah, I let you finish up, but in the past, you've shown us what no development would look like and what all of Hancock Lot being developed would look like in terms of estimated revenue from the Hancock Lot. And I thought that was valuable when you presented it before. And I'm sorry, cutting off.
I think just to address you, that's a very good point you bring up. It comes up in many discussions of tactical and financing and redevelopment financing and it really addresses the but-for question. And that is, would the kind of development that's occurring in downtown Quincy have occurred and will continue to occur without the public infrastructure investment? If you believe that you don't need to put public infrastructure in, then you don't, then you don't need a DIF because the private sector would take care of it. I think it's been proven very, very straightforwardly that it was the early stage investment, risky investment that the city of Quincy put into downtown to attract the kind of development, to come up with a vision and a plan and fund those things, to, you know, move the brook and to make the kind of streets of difference, to put the roads in, to really set the stage to make it easier and better, more lucrative and more profitable for the private sector to come in. And now you're starting to reap rewards. And I think the point of the urban redevelopment plan, urban renewal plan, is to identify the rest of the needs that have to be made in order to truly capture the kind of value that can be created. And that's, that's what it gets to. The DIF is a tool that you take the new growth increment on that, only the increment, remember the base stays the same and flows back to the general fund at an inflated amount each year. It's that new growth that goes to support the reimbursement for the public infrastructure investment. And when the bonds are paid off, all of that money flows right back and becomes, you know, everyone's money in the town, it's not obligated.
No, and that's a good point, and I don't disagree with you. I was on the council, I took those votes to authorize the money to move the, to move the brook, to move forward with the downtown. And so I believe in that theory you're espousing about, there has to be infrastructure investment without a doubt. The concern for me is when I talk to residents in Ward Four, and maybe it's different for other councillors, but they're not talking to me, they might say the downtown's coming along nicely, but they're primarily concerned with the quality of life in our neighborhoods, with the streets, the condition of our streets, our sidewalks, our schools, and so, you know, public safety. So I just, it's a fine, it's a fine line, it's a balance. So I agree, we have to invest in infrastructure downtown, but it's a fine line with how much investment. And we are starting to see the result of that investment, but again, that's limited to downtown. So the investment is for downtown, the benefits, I think, are felt primarily downtown, especially if we keep using the increased revenue. Because the benefit of having it downtown isn't that there's new restaurants you can go to, and that's not why government's motivated to do this, it's so that downtown, downtown can be the economic engine that drives the city forward. So for me, it's, it's a delicate balancing act, and so I always try and take it from the perspective of not, how much more should we spend, but justify how much we need to spend. I want to spend, just as I do when I buy anything for myself, I want to spend as little as possible to get the best result, right? I want to spend as little as I can to get the best, you know, refrigerator or whatever it is, the best quality in that balance. And I think it's, it's similar for this, we have to, we have to find that delicate balance. As we go through the process of deliberating, I'll, you know, refer you with questions, I suppose, and ask the comments, questions about why so much, why this much for that. But all right, if you could get that, that estimated DIF revenue for the Hancock Lot projection, maybe the next time we deliberate, that'd be great. Thank you. Bill, we got a couple questions.
Counselor, I'm watching just what it's worth, sort of diar化的, and you know it's there for questions, going to come from the floor, so I'll package this all up and send it out, and hopefully we'll have those information for the committee, you know, soon.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.